It's really close to six o'clock on July tenth. Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the regular select board meeting to order. First item, set adjusted agenda. Does anybody have anything that?
Yes, we need to add an item.
Okay.
I'd like to add that select board to consider approving the submission by the community development coordinator of an application to the Rural Economic Development Initiative. Ready to work on this two CDBGDR applications. The CDBGDR applications would address flood resilience planning project in downtown Hardwick and a flood mitigation project on HED-owned land west of downtown. The community development coordinator will draft and submit the CDBGDR applications. This is the ready program to hire a consultant to do a grant application for us.
So we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
That'll be an item fourteen.
Yes.
I did not jot all that down, so, but I got enough.
You should have.
I know, I should have.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything else?
We don't have to say anything.
We do not.
It would. It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended or whatever.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a new agenda. We'll roll with next communication from the audience. Anyone here to discuss anything that's not upcoming on the agenda? All right, next, select board to approve minutes from last time, which was June twenty-sixth.
I can motion refer to the change from sex. You guys have it ready?
Second.
I have one question in the, on page three in the Hardwick Electric Department report. It says, Michael reported that HED is still working on rate increases. There will be a public hearing and the information for this hearing will be posted on Hardwick Electric's website. Is there going to be a public hearing? I thought it was, you could post your concerns to the website.
He said there was going to be a public thing. With a Zoom, with a virtual.
Excellent. Good. Your memory is better than mine then. Great. Okay, that was my own question.
And the information about it will be on their website.
Great, perfect. All right, anybody else have anything on minutes? So the motion to approve minutes as written, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, town manager report.
Okay, we had the hiring committee for the public works coordinator position had two interviews this week. I thought they went well.
Who is the hiring committee?
Myself, Eric Bremick, Sherry Cornish. We, I'm setting up responses to our sanitary survey for the water system. I've been working on that. They're wanting us to do additional chlorine testing and some storage tank maintenance. So we're working on getting a plan together for that so I can respond to the state. I've got an update from Horizon Engineering on the several bridges that they are engineering. They've completed the wetland surveys and the land surveys on the Bridge Thirty-One in East Hardwick, up on East Main Street in the bed. Yep, and they'll be doing, they'll be bringing in a drill rig to do soil borings next. And while they have the drill rig here, they're going to try to get to Cary Road, Fisher-Polly and Tucker Brook so they can maximize the time for that. With Cary Road, Fisher-Polly and Tucker Brook, the H&amp;H studies are done. And then they'll be doing the surveying and creating the site plans as early as August. So then they can begin designing the bridges. Hopefully, the Bridge Thirty-One project will have a site plan by the fall, or a bridge plan by the fall that we can go out to bid with for next construction season. The other ones are going to be a little bit behind. Also working on a lengthy public records request involving the railroad master leases. I worked on that today for a little while. I've got to pull together a bunch more stuff for them. Don't know what it's about, but had a request. We've had, actually had quite a few public records requests for other things too. The Mill Street study with VHB is starting. We're trying to set up a local concerns meeting the week of August eleventh. We don't have a date yet for that. But that, we'll be inviting the stakeholders on along the Mill Street and South Main Street businesses, residents for a local concerns meeting. So that's like the beginning of that scoping study project. So that's exciting. Also been working on with FEMA, I've had several meetings with Alridge and Elliott and FEMA officials and state officials about the wastewater treatment facility, also the fire station and the lift stations. So that's a, been a back and forth. Some of the meetings have gotten a little heated, but just what FEMA keeps asking for. They're, we're giving them the information, but they're just asking for it in different forms. So we have to give it to them, the same information in different forms. It's really annoying. And then I extended the real estate option agreement with Vermont Huts until the end of the year so they can wait for the environmental assessment to be done, which I think has been submitted. I read through a chain of emails I got from Rural Edge and the site assessment has been sent to DEC for approval. So, but I haven't seen the site assessment. That's for the nine South Main Street property.
Did they have to do a separate one for their, for the other property or?
No, we, they can't do one until that one's done.
I see.
Yeah.
Did you pass our invite along to somebody?
Invite.
From Rural Edge to come visit us?
No, not particularly. I mean, I tried to present the idea that we would get together, but I didn't get any response yet.
Okay, keep working on it.
I was going to say, is there something that we want to do like that or something that?
I thought, I thought it would be helpful.
Last meeting, like.
I thought it would be helpful, yeah.
They were going to be here.
No, not so much, but we'll see whether we can.
Well, let's just send one of them and subscribe a little invite. Say, Hardwick Select Board, I'd like to see your leader.
Okay.
In front row to discuss your properties in Hardwick.
Okay, yeah.
I thought that's what we wanted.
Yep.
Not if they want to come. We're asking them to come.
Maybe we should just tell them they need to be here.
That's what I thought we did.
Okay.
It's what I did.
Okay, yep. And then the last thing, the pedestrian bridge. CCS has the contracts for the wall. I still don't have the contracts for the bridge from SE Group, but I'm hoping to get them very soon. There's been some back and forth conversation about pre-cast concrete versus pour-in-place cast, pour-in-place concrete, so they're kind of going back and forth right now. So that's, that's what's going on.
Okay, is there a timeline for the public works director or is it the general?
I'd like to do a second interview towards the end of the month.
Then that's basically open for all.
Project, wall project lost out to the group bridge project, are you saying as well?
I think we can mobilize and start the wall project, but I don't want to mess with a notice to proceed for the bridge project. That's the thing. I don't want them to think that we're starting a wall project and we're kind of jumping the gun, but we, we need to do a pre-construction meeting. That's the next big thing with USDA.
We're essentially burnt this construction season.
No, I don't think we have.
No, if we have, that means we've lost the money for the bridge. We haven't burnt the.
Am I looking at a different calendar than you guys who are with that?
I think a lot of the site work can be done. It's just setting the bridge. And I think that was their plan to begin with. There's, we're still.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I'm very concerned, okay? Is that fair to say?
Me too.
I'm someone that works in the industry every day for the last fifteen years. It's the middle of July and they don't even have a sign up. Mobilization alone is probably twenty-five days.
Yep.
So that's five weeks of work, people. That's Labor Day. Snow flies six weeks after that.
Yeah, and they have to be out of the river September, October first.
Daddy could call that secret, maybe you get them going.
So I mean, I don't, I just don't feel like we're getting answers. And I understand what you're saying too. I'm not pushing you. I'm just saying that.
It's frustrating.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But you're, Obie, you're still gunning for getting them in there and working.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, I get that.
Now it's after July one.
If we need to go past October first, we just need to get other permits. And that's a conversation and it's submitting some paperwork. I'm not fearful of that. We, we did the EWP project up on Route Fifteen in December. We were driving excavators on the river.
Yeah, hopefully we won't be doing that.
So.
All right, well, keep, keep up the, up the good fight.
What it is.
Yeah, yeah, keep it moving forward. That's what we need.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it. That's all I got.
That's all you got? Okay.
Done.
All right, road foreman report?
Ditching, new stone.
Oh, I saw some stone in a ditch on.
McBell Road.
Yeah, and it was our stone for a little bit.
Sidewalks, sidewalks.
Trimming stuff down on the Cottage Street Bridge.
Yep. Kenny's on vacation, so I've worked my down plant.
Fixing water lines.
Water lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
Normal stuff.
I'm not sure why Tom's not here.
Okay.
He said he was coming.
There was. All right, next, police department report given by Mike Henry.
So last Friday, the big thing, we lost our internet through DPS system. We lost our email system, everything. So we couldn't, all weekend it was a disaster. Couldn't print, couldn't body cameras, nothing worked as a result of it. And it's not, it wasn't consolidated to go up to find and figure out what was going on with it. But it was the DPS system. I couldn't get the internet up and going until Monday. Our email is still down. It's nap, it's CGIS, which is the Criminal Justice Information Services. It's a national encrypted email that we have and that's down nationally, not just us. So anyone that's associated with that doesn't have it. So if people are emailing me and wondering why I'm not getting back to them or any of the other officers, that's why we can't get into it. We've been utilizing our personal email to try and get stuff done, but a lot of stuff we can't do that way because it needs to be encrypted. So George Shelrick, who was retired trooper, was with us. He started with us back in May of twenty-twenty-two. He's stepping down now. Decided it's time. So he's up there. But just doesn't want to be on the road anymore. Don't blame him with that. But he is still going to continue to work for us. He's still going to do the snowmobile patrol if we need somebody for like transports or somebody to come out. We have a natural disaster and we need somebody to come out. He's still going to work for us in that capacity. So we also had a problem with vehicles driving on rail trails. We worked with the rail trail committee. This is going back almost a month. And I'm sure people have seen now that we have, they're installing some of the.
Bolters.
Bolters down on Woke Street and then up on East Church Street. They put in some guardrails to keep people from driving down there and utilizing that as well. So that's really helped out, especially people with New Cabot and its building. People were driving down there thinking that was the way to the parking lot. So we need to stop that. So they're, they're temporary ones so they can take them out in the winter time. Therefore, we can use it for snowmobile in the winter time. We monitor that. We purchased radar signs with, it's a portable sign, battery operated, to use moving around town. I purchased a new one of those with grant money. The first one I got, we thought it was great because it had a great warranty. It seemed like it had all the bells and whistles we wanted. But once we got it, we found it was not user friendly. The software wasn't really compatible. You actually had to take the signs, the entire sign down to go charge the batteries. So it was just, we're sending that back. Got a new one, which is similar to the same ones we have. So now that gives us three portable signs that are battery operated. Batteries last, depending on how busy the roadway is, you know, about two weeks. And then we try and move it around to different places. We get a lot of requests for, for people, so we try with three signs that are all this, so we can move those signs around to different places. The new ones put up, I think, on Center Road or Slack Hill period.
Oh, yeah.
They're coming down. And then I think that one's going to go up on West Hill as well. So we had three applicants for the full-time position. You know, none of them had law enforcement, prior law enforcement experience. We haven't had anybody with prior law enforcement experience that has applied yet. We had one person split out and is kind of in the process right now, so we'll see how that goes. We did interview, interviews and that's where we are at that point.
So potentially, like we've done in the past, I might hire somebody without experience, we'd send them to the academy.
We, we're going to start off with the, you know, part-time academy. Make sure they're going to be a good fit for us.
Yeah.
Then we'll, we'll invest the money for the full-time academy.
Okay.
A lot of time, a lot of training. Joe Donna, who's going to be, have his part-time certification here pretty soon. He's got probably a couple hundred hours of field training right now done. So probably another hundred hours and he'll be ready to go. So. We have the Ford Fusion car that's up for sale. I don't know if we posted that yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, we're getting on that. So 2019 Ford Fusion, we have a great one for you. One owner. One owner. That's it.
Does it come with the blue light?
Nope. I got taken out.
I took the blue light out. So it's stripped down now. It's ready to go.
Is that an auction or what are you going to do?
We're, we're going to advertise it. See what we get. We just put forty-five hundred dollars into it, breaks and it's got a new inspection sticker.
Might be good in the hail fleet.
Yeah.
All right.
Parts car.
Yeah.
For running to buy parts.
Two more vehicles, they're going to put a fence up around like that.
Thanks, Mike. Next, we have Hardwick Electric Department report, Roger Prevoz here.
Hello, good to be here. I, it's like I'm, I'm what stands between you and much more exciting topic. So I'm a one-handed reporter. I just have several topics, none of them very dramatic. One thing I wanted to report, at our last meeting of the commissioners, we wrestled with a topic that we talked about probably for years. And usually when we're talking about it, it's because one of our customers has complained. And that's the subject of how does a customer engage with Hardwick Electric about a new project? They either want to do, they would just want to know, can I charge an electric vehicle with the service I have at my home? Or can I upgrade and do this? Or it could be new service altogether, but usually it's an upgrade. And the frustration stemmed from our abnormal utility oriented process, which is they have to come in, fill in a form and hand us a check for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars before we engage. So that means before we will go to their home and look at anything, before we'll agree to discuss a project. And we wrestled with it because it does take considerable amount of real energy and resource to give somebody what they're ultimately going to need, which is a written estimate that's binding, that says, these are all the things we'll do, this is what it will cost, this is how long it will take. And what we agreed to and voted on at the meeting, that I want to get out there just because this complaint probably has touched a number of you. We thought Hardwick would be difficult to talk to, is we voted that we will now allow the HED staff to provide customers with information to help them scope a new, new service or new project upgrade before requiring the payment of the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee. And the information we'll give them at that stage will be, it'll be oral, it'll be non-binding. It won't be that written, formal binding bit. But we're hopeful that that will help them decide it's worth doing, it's not worth doing. I need a lot more money. I can afford it. That kind of sort of rough screaming for people. And they'll still, ultimately, if they want to proceed, have to do the existing process, which involves the check and the application and all that. But we're hoping that by doing this preliminary step, it'll help people over the hump. We, we're, we're setting a limit of only one site visit because sending someone out to a site ultimately is expensive because it's a redirection of resources. But we'll go out if we need to to a site once and get some off information about that. So I hope that'll wind up being positive for the whole community and it'll be workable on the end for the staff. But I thought it'd all be interesting. I hadn't heard some of the concerns. Second topic, you've heard us talk about advanced metering. That is the meters that you have now going to be electronic and internet connected. Those, that project is moving forward. We're moving in unison with some of the other many utilities under NESA. We've all chosen the same provider, which is really good for us because it means we're not on our own. We're doing something with the strength of other people preceding us too. And so the stage we're at now is it's really commencing. They're doing a field survey and they're figuring out how they're going to build the network. But our topography is so difficult when you do transmissions that we have to have a number of what they call data, data concentrator units that'll collect for a certain area and then consolidate the data and then get transmitted into a main center for us. So they're doing that survey. They'll use that survey information to do the design. And that'll move us a step closer to getting that implemented. And once we have the smart meters, you know, we'll be able to do a number of different things. But first things first, we need to get the smart, smart meters in place and working. Next topic, well, you know, which on this day is pretty topical over the last two years of flooding. Wokeet Hydro Plant, which was knocked out in the first flood, was almost back online. And the second flood knocked it out again. And so we, right now, sorry about that. Right now, we've got to run through the hoops with FEMA. And there's a feasibility, engineer feasibility study that FEMA requires. So that's underway. That'll set us up for doing real bidding and really get the project moving. But it's going to be a long, it's going to be a long process, but it's still alive. We haven't heard anything yet that says stop, we can't get Wokeet back online. Next topic is a minor one. We, we are getting a new phone system. Our phone system hasn't upgraded, so that'll come in and be updated this week. Next topic is, we did have a team working, I think, with certain members of the town team on the emergency management plans and procedures. I think that's just great, you know, it's a unified plan. And then the last topic is, I think we may have someone back at the next select board meeting asking for some approval for us to move forward with some right-of-way clearance on a priority basis on the circuit that runs along Route Fourteen. And that's a three-phase circuit. It's pretty important and we'll get to some right-of-way clearing. But we'll come to you formally. And that's the, that's the rundown. Any questions for Hardwick Electric?
I'm really glad to hear the update about the customer service piece and allowing a single site visit just for letting people understand what the scope of their project is. I think that's going to be really helpful. I have heard from multiple people about that.
Yeah. And, and when you think about it, you know, the only reason for us to have this little tiny-scale municipal electric instead of being part of something big like Green Mountain Power is because we feel like it's more responsive, more plugged in, more part of our community. So if we're basically telling people, you know, fill in the form and then we'll talk to you. You know, we're sort of acting like Green Mountain Power, you know, we might as well be part of it. So we hope it'll work. It is harder for the staff, there's no question. Because loads of people, it's pretty.
They're being compensated for it very well, so. They're not volunteers.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Absolutely.
Customer service.
Yep. So the new staff there, the new culture is definitely, that's the whole, that's priority one, is customer service. Obviously they have to keep the lights on. That's the new focus of trying to make changes like this. That's it.
Great. Any other questions for Roger? Thank you.
Oh, and if you can, if you can appoint, reappoint and appoint some commissioners later today.
Yes, I believe that we are, yeah. Where is that, item five?
That'll get us to full.
Yes, full capacity before your next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Consider it done.
All right, next is item one, select board to consider approving liquor license renewal. This is for cabinet?
I'm making a, I'm making a motion to approve the liquor license for AgriMark. The business says AgriMark slash yellow bar.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, item two is select board to review and approve the annual internal financial controls checklist.
Any changes?
The only change that I did was Casey said Eric took her little seminar on the grant presentation she did.
Oh, yeah.
So the, have select board members attended my training. We counted that. So that is the only change.
I was going to ask.
He asked a lot of questions too.
He did have questions.
Yeah, I gave him some of the questions for him to ask.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Everything else was the same.
Anything to approve or accept or whatever we, approve?
Either or, they're interchangeable.
Control checklist.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks you guys for being on top of this stuff. That's critical. Next is item three, select board to discuss property off Wright Farm Road that Conservation Commission wants to turn into town forest. And I imagine that's why we have such a, such a crowd here tonight.
Hi, I'm Rachel Kane, co-chair of the Hardwick Conservation Commission. And to continue with this exciting proposal that we had about creating a community forest that we touched on last week. And joining me here is Paul Silo and Jack Travelstad from Northern Rivers Land Trust. They can especially talk about the experience of Wokeet when they created their community forest a couple of years ago. And it'll be Hannah Redmond from the Trust for Public Land. I just want to say, in my take up on this opportunity, I see the, the Trust for Public Land offering really, to my mind, to make a dream come true. You know, it's a dedicated and experienced organization that's really working to essentially give this a very valuable gift to our town. It's an incredible deal for our much-loved little mountain. And that, you know, if we pull this off, that lovely little mountain will be a public treasure for the future. So we're hoping the select board will feel there's enough information and confident in voting to accept the land after all these questions are answered with these brilliant people here. And I just wanted to add, if we, if the town feels we need to raise funds, we have started on the Conservation Commission over the last few months talking idly about creating a town conservation fund that would allow us to accept donations, financial donations. So when the town, the time comes, that would be something that we can work on this winter. And that, I know I'm pretty confident that we could bring in a lot of decent donations. And if we had a town conservation fund, I'd be happy to put in the first thousand-dollar check. But if anyone else wants to beat me for that honor, I wouldn't complain. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Silo right now. Right, Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. So I just wanted to be, first of all, thank you for including this item on the agenda today. today. I just want to be clear about the request, the select board today is to decide whether the town would accept ownership of the property if the fundraising and due diligence efforts are successful. There's some urgency, I think, as we said when we saw you last time, as the property's currently on the market. And there's a key fundraising deadline early this fall that we don't want to miss. So a decision today from the select board would allow TPL to immediately take the next step and initiate an appraisal, which would provide the basis for an offer to the property owners and hopefully a purchase agreement. So that's, I just wanted to be clear about that, that that's what's, you know, what we're about here. But I'm going to turn it over to Hannah, who can actually take you through the process of how this unfolds and why and all that. So Hannah Redman?
Hi, everyone, thank you so much for your time. I'm Hannah Redman, Trust for Public Land. Like Paul said, here to talk a little bit about process and then with Paul, Jack and Rachel to answer any questions that you all have. So Trust for Public Land, we're a national conservation nonprofit working to connect everyone to the outdoors. Specifically in Vermont, we've conserved over 72,000 acres of land, working with municipalities, nonprofits, state, federal government. And across northern New England, we have a focus on town and community forests because we believe in the benefits that they provide, the quality of life that's created by locally-owned and managed land. In Hardwick, there are existing town forests and we see this property as a potential to expand all of the benefits that residents here already see. So economic benefits from recreation, potential for timber management, sugaring operations, recreation benefits, educational opportunities, and then just general wildlife habitat, conservation, ecosystem services. So on to process, which I'm sure is where most of the questions will come in. Every project that Trust for Public Land, TPL, works on, we need three things. We need a willing landowner, in this case, the project's on the market, so that's pretty willing. We need the approval of a long-term owner, here represented by the Hardwick Select Board. And then we need funding. So in terms of fundraising, Trust for Public Land and Northern Rivers Land Trust would work together to apply to grant sources at the state level, potentially the federal level, and then also from a number of private grant opportunities. As Rachel referenced, there also is an expectation that the town, whether that's municipally or through a private fundraising effort, would be able to contribute financially. And the reason for that is that it makes our grant applications much more competitive when there is a sign of investment and interest at the municipal level. In Wolkit, where Trust for Public Land and Northern Rivers Land Trust just completed a new community forest initiative, the town of Wolkit contributed $25,000. So we would hope that a similar or higher contribution could be made in Hardwick from either municipal funds and/or through private fundraising. Let's see, all of that funding would be due at closing, which we think would be sometime in 2027, so about two years to complete the fundraising efforts publicly and privately. The other two process pieces that I wanted to touch on are first, community input, so town forest, community forest, it's really in the name. These are locally-managed lands and the uses and management should be directed, guided, created by local residents. In most of the community forest projects that we've worked on, there's a steering committee that is created just to manage the new or expanded town forest. That's what happened to Wolkit and we believe that's what would make the most sense here in Hardwick if this Buffalo Mountain Town Forest expansion moves forward. So that steering committee made up of local residents would help to solicit input from town residents to figure out what, with this potential 319-acre new expanded town forest, what residents want to see there. That process usually looks like community meetings, maybe a survey, site visits, just ways to really get people's awareness up and solicit their input. And then finally, the last nitty-gritty piece I wanted to touch on is due diligence. With every, you know, Paul mentioned an appraisal, with every project, every acquisition, there's due diligence that needs to happen. The appraisal, the environmental site assessment, which we've already heard about that process tonight, title work, and then we usually do some kind of ecological assessment. And all of those pieces are pieces that Trust for Public Land would handle and direct. So our goal is that the town process is really more focused on visioning, we can be handling things in the background. That's the quick and dirty overview. I think we'd hope to make some time for questions. And I also have some handouts, I'm not sure if they're in your board packet, so I can pass those around and maybe just make it into the packet.
We, yeah, thank you, we had, we did have them in our online packet. And they're in our printed packet, right? Excellent, yeah.
I just have one more question. I really appreciate all of the information, I think, coming to the last meeting and preparing us for this and providing, really, most of my questions are answered by the presentation and what you provided in the packet, which is really very helpful, thank you. My only question, if totally possible, if I missed it, would be when the select board needs to commit to that percentage of cost? Does it need to be tonight or down the line?
Great question, it does not need to be tonight. Ideally, if we can know before our funding deadlines, which are, we definitely have a funding deadline, you know, November, we may have one in September because that short investment is helpful for our funding applications. So I would say ideally in the fall, but hey, norms increase that number.
So we could theoretically approve their best tonight and then have a separate, and then approve the dollar amount in October or something like that?
Correct, great.
Other questions?
I have a question, thank you. Are there limited uses to this, like are there specific things that are going to be prohibited on this property?
There will be a conservation easement held by Northern Rivers Land Trust on the property, and there are some templates for that, I don't know if you all want to speak to that.
Yes, there is a template for the conservation easement and it will outline a number of obvious things that would be prohibited, like dumping of trash, things of that nature. But this is what we will work with the town on to prepare and hold that document.
Are there any other obvious things that are on there, like kind of boil-the-plate stuff that probably would want to know?
There's a long list of things. You can't subdivide the property, you can't develop it, you can't sell pieces of it off away. It's designed to stay a community forest in perpetuity.
Other questions or thoughts?
I mean, my just personal thoughts, I think that you kind of tied into your question again, I was actually impressed by how much would be allowed as a town forest. I think when Woodbury Mountain was being sold, there was a lot more restriction and coordinate for things like passing. So I personally think this idea of, the general idea of having it be public is wonderful, but also having it be locally-controlled is something that I think is really unique and is something that we could really do a lot with. So I was impressed by that and excited to see that it really is not just the select board, but also the community and the steering committee that could actually kind of decide how, maybe it's a slave, seems like there's actually quite a responsibility within that.
Any other select board questions or thoughts? Anybody else in the audience want to say anything?
Just to note that the Hardwick Plan Commission sent a letter of support and outlined in the town plan how this acquisition matches several of the goals and objectives of the town plan. So by executing this, you are fulfilling what the select board committed when they approved the town plan. And one of the key things I think is also important for the audience to remember or to be aware of, it's not just the Buffalo Mountain, but the fact that that gives direct wildlife corridor connection into Hardwick Lake area, which is HED land, which then extends up the Lemoyle River. So it's an unbelievable wildlife corridor which will enhance the habitat all this around in the area still.
Norma?
Yes, I'm a member of the Hardwick Trails Committee as well. And I simply want to say, the Hardwick Trails Committee also, and I don't know if you have a copy of your information, has sent a letter of support for this project. Because we certainly can attest a thousand ways in which a piece of public land that is used by the community enhances life in the community. And you all know that because Hardwick Trails has existed for 20 years now and we have seen how much it is an asset to the town to have this kind of space available for people.
Thank you. I think we, one thing that was noted in one of the pamphlets was the, you know, economically the town would lose the tax revenue from that parcel because, you know, the west end is on land that we own. And that was estimated to be on the order of $5,000 a year.
Today?
In today's, yep. Not a village, developed into something else. A very steep village they didn't flood yet.
The Hardwick Plan Commission were very aware of what areas could be developed in that and the steep slope and permeability of the soils would pretty much preclude any type of village expansion of that area, so.
I just want to just one question, is there a specific kind of motion that needs to be made for the partnership sometimes? Sometimes groups have a specific way that a motion needs to be said?
I think no, because we're not, it's not the state asking.
Okay.
So would we agree to accept the land as the, as the ask?
Yeah. So I would motion that the town of Hardwick agrees to accept the Wright Farm property to be turned into a town forest, if we would agree to that?
Sure.
Yeah, motion that the town explore the partnerships with the Land Trust, recreational organizations.
Sure.
I would just mention, it's the town of Hardwick Select Board, you just said town of Hardwick.
I have total faith that Amanda is going to crack that into a very powerful motion.
The community hasn't spoken, but...
Well, that's...
What is your concern? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, yeah, Dan?
I just have, you know, this is pretty fresh to be voting on taking on 1980. Now making a decision, without real estate deals in the past, making a decision in 15 minutes doesn't, just, I don't realize I can do that.
And I think as you maybe started to say in the beginning, that we haven't really had any kind of community process.
I've spoken to some person about it, so.
And some people do pay attention to our meetings and so I'm sure they noticed last night, but that's not the majority of the community?
Several thousand people that aren't here right now that...
Right.
...may not have the opportunity, so that's just my concern, that's nothing about the budget, it's about the process right now.
Right.
So it's, just, it sounds like that, according to what Hannah was saying, that we're not committing any dollars to it right now. I know that I just made a motion to accept it, but...
You're committing to the project though, if you're doing this.
We're committing to a project, but I guess I'm wondering, so there's some timeline for me to make in terms of grant funding, is there also time to have, what are you suggesting?
No, I don't know, I'm just saying personally it's quick action.
So if it turned out that we, you know, I don't think we will, but if we had negative feedback from the town, from the community, you know, can we rescind that approval, you know, can we back out in a year? Because I'm not...
I'm not rescinding the motion, I'm not making a decision.
Well, right, but I mean, I don't think it... Can I ask you a question or a procedural thing? Could someone explain the public engagement piece of this project?
I can speak to...
Sorry, can you state your name?
Jack Travelstad, I'm the chair of the Northern Rivers Land Trust. I had the pleasure of working with the town of Wolkit over the last two years, they're going through the same process. They immediately accepted ownership of the property. They then set out to form what they called a stewardship committee consisting of 16 members from the town who worked with us and the Trust for Public Land to decide how they wanted to see that property used. It was, they held public hearings with the committee, invited the public in, they, one of the first things they did was prepare a town-wide survey that went out to everyone in the town. They got a tremendous amount of response to that with questions on, I believe it was 52 different possible uses of the property and got a tremendous response. I would encourage you to do something very similar.
But that's all kind of after the...
That was after the motion to, that you would be willing to accept the property.
Yeah.
So Jack, was there a process before that, which is, I guess what you're asking, was there...
Yeah.
That you know? That's a good question.
They did hold a public hearing and then voted yes.
So...
So can we ask if there would be time to have a public hearing? Would there be time to have a public hearing or when's this like?
I would just like to make one, if I understand correctly, Wolkit, the land was not on the market at that time. And in this case, this land is on the open market and is listed for sale, so that's something to bear in mind.
Okay, I have a follow-up question to that. So would this motion create some sort of an option agreement and hold the land? What would change after this in terms of it being on the open market? Would it remain on the open market or would there be a real estate agreement?
This is when the Trust for Public Land comes in immediately.
Yeah, if the select board chooses to accept this land pending funding due diligence, then Trust for Public Land can negotiate an agreement with the landowners to secure the property. There's no guarantee, they're open to it, but there's no guarantee that they, that we'd be successful in those negotiations. And then from that point, we would order an appraisal and if that value worked for everyone, we would move forward. So Rachel's right, that there's more urgency than there was in Wolkit just because the property's on the market, so it creates sort of a, an urgency we would not like to have and also a cart and horse situation in terms of who's input we need.
Just circling back to what Stan is concerned of what the town has approved and their feelings on it. Hardwick Town Plan specifically states and to say that this plan was developed in public areas withheld both at the Plan Commission level and the select board level before the select board approved it. But on page 22, the town supports the efforts of organizations in the purchase of development rights or other conservation methods provided the land protected meets the objectives of this plan, page 22. So the concern of whether the town supports the purchase of land such as this, that has already been presented in numerous public meetings and approved when we approved the town plan.
Thank you, David, you made my decision for me. That's all.
Okay, so, well, just because you want to vote, is everybody else ready to vote? Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
There was a firm problem before, David. That's exactly why I have a problem every time you guys bring something to us for us to approve.
Because you bring back and use it as a tool against us.
The town plan, is it something that's being used as a tool against us?
It doesn't mean that everybody in town knows that we're going to buy 319 acres on Buffalo Mountain.
Well.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't have anything to do with 319 acres on Buffalo Mountain.
But there is civic responsibility, pay attention.
All right, do it.
Yeah, I think the difference is between the abstract and the general versus the particular, and this has suddenly gotten very particular. And, and I agree that it's, that it's sudden, and, yeah. But, here we are. So motion carries, and we'll see where the process leads. All right, next, item four is let board to consider reappointing Tyler Buswell and. Let me read it.
Because there's, there's two, for the two-year, and there's two for the three-year. And we only got Tyler for the two-year and Kathleen for the three-year. And we haven't gotten any more.
So we're not, right, okay, but I thought.
It's a write-in.
I didn't see.
The world is fair.
They're all on board.
We got some new faces here tonight, let's pick some people.
So hang on. All right, so I think that we only did get these two letters of interest, right? So, so let's consider reappointing Tyler Buswell to a two-year term and reappointing Kathy Hammonds to a three-year term on the Hardwick Conservation. You get that, Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. And any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, select board to consider appointing, reappointing Michael Ambrosino to the Hardwick Electric Board Commissioners and Jake Lester to a two-year term as a Hardwick Electric Commissioner. And Jake is here.
So they're both two-year terms? Is that it? No, we're.
Yes.
They're both two-year terms, okay. So Mike, Jake, do you want to say hello? And we got your letter, but just introduce yourself again.
Yeah, definitely, so my name's Jake Lester, resident of East Hardwick. For the past five years, I currently work in the energy industry at Core Power and Waterbury. So being a part of the public utility process has been of interest. Been involved with other town, the Hardwick Area Food Pantry, as a board member for about five years and have worked in the community in the past. So shout out to Kaylee, who I worked with at Wonder Arts for two years. So I've just attended a commission meeting last month to get a sense for the, the operation function of the commission. And, you know, interested in being engaged in topics such as, you know, resiliency planning, you know, future, understanding the, the future needs of transition to a more electric, higher electric demand, also challenges of peak planning, like peak shaving, storage needs. So for context, I work at Core Power as an energy storage company. So I can bring some expertise in the category of battery systems, large-scale battery systems. So, yeah, happy to answer any questions about me, I know some of you, I don't, haven't met all of you.
You're opting, so I'm not, yeah. You're in. I have a motion to appoint, appoint a gentleman to the Hardwick Electric Commissioner. Says, I had a short stamp over there, that's, that's something that he needs some experience in if he's not beyond that commission.
Second. Okay, any other questions for Jake? Discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you, thanks for coming.
Excellent.
Congratulations, Jake.
And thanks to Michael in absentia, I know he's been on the board for a number of years too. Great. Oh, and I'm just going to take this moment to do a quick shout out to Lynn Gedenkin, who was on that board for, I'm not sure how long, but quite a number of years.
18 years?
Can't be that long.
Wasn't that?
But quite a while, and she, her term is up.
Only more than 10, yeah.
She chose this time to step back and use her time for other things, but she's brought along to the board with her legal understanding of power contracts, et cetera, so thanks to Lynn. All right. Uh, next is, oh, no, we already did, I'm sorry. Next is item six, let board to consider reappointing Dave Gross and Larry Fligelman for three-year terms on Hardwick Planning Commission. Believe those are the only letters we got. Good night, everyone.
You know, I'll have to leave. We actually, we still got more.
Jake, if you stick around, we're appointing your town's commissioners.
Danny, you're really turning down the room there.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make that, I'm so moved.
Okay, uh, those, I believe those are the two letters of interest that we received.
And they're two.
They're still two open after that?
No.
Oh, they're two open, yes.
I don't believe they're, they're.
No, there isn't, on the planning commission?
There are not.
Nope. There's, D R V has open access.
Okay.
We're going to discuss D R V next meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, all in favor?
All right, well, let's go find out.
All in, all in favor of approving Dave Gross and Larry Fligelman? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I didn't say opposed.
Oh, you did not?
You gave that up.
No, I know.
No, I wanted to.
I guess what I want. But motion carries, thank you. Next, item seven, select board to consider approving the contract with S L R as a municipal planning grant consultant and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with them.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I think this is the one, we have a bunch of contract related stuff, but this is the one.
Let's, let's, tell me what, what, what the one it is. I want to see how much you guys pay attention to our flood mitigation, flood recovery efforts.
So I think.
That's what you're for?
No, no.
So I, so.
It's the steering committee for the N G P G, the Grant Street Starfield District. I read it all. I thought it was quite a thorough evaluation that you folks put into that.
Kristen, Kristen did this.
So Kristen's.
I knew it did.
So S L R, S L R is doing, the Jackson Dam is doing the E D A grant through Lemoil County Planning Commission to model the river. And it would only make sense for them to do this, they're also a great engineering firm. They know river modeling, they know about floodplain stuff, so I think this is a good choice.
We talked about it before.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks, thanks, I have to start a belief in S L R, but I think what was put together for us, for this, was really great. And I love this as a template for other projects, because we often don't get a lot of information about the, unless we're actually reading the applications, don't get a lot of information, and I thought this was a great. No, we don't, we just don't. We all have Tom or you to tell us. So it was, I think especially the evaluation criteria was, was really, was great.
He doesn't have a little trust issue with you guys, so we'd like to see it right here. All right, so.
No, you're fine, you're good.
This was very thorough.
I would like to vote.
But, but, we had a motion. The first thought was very thorough, second, I believe.
Right on this one.
Yeah, very much.
Okay, great. All right, all right.
It was Danny and Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so any more discussion? All in favor of authorizing the town manager to sign a contract with S L R for the, your consultant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you to town manager's office for all that assistance and analysis. Next, item eight, select board to consider approving a banner application for aware for the Fall Craft Fair. They do this every year.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Good place for it, right? Yeah. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry. Uh, next is item nine, select board to consider approving 2026 coin drop.
We have to round those.
So we got, we have seven for six slots, right?
We have seven for six slots.
Yeah.
So, take it away, take it away.
You guys can either choose, or we can draw from a hat.
Let's see what we got here. Let's see who we got here, how about if we all blind pick one we don't want to get? That sounds way hard fun, I guess.
I'm kind of into that, I think I'm just.
All right, so.
I won't be the only one.
I think we're on the same page.
Can I, can I comment on coin drops?
You can.
Is it out of turn or?
You can, I can recognize.
Commissioner for like a couple minutes. I love it, I love it.
If one is the, for the, the Hardwick Area Food Pantry, I'd be here to support.
It's not.
It's not.
It should be.
I always say we, we split a time slot with someone last year and.
Inform you, there's, there's the last.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. I, I just recall that splitting a time slot, sharing it with another organization worked nicely, so maybe you can ask.
Who did you share?
It is not any fun, I'm all for doing.
Why do we only have six?
I don't really remember.
Because.
Why can't we do April?
You could, I don't know why.
I think it has to do with how.
Weather.
Cold, yeah, how hard it is to stand out there.
Honestly, I would rather have, I would rather have April than July or August, what I'm saying, out there in the street. That's what, you know what I'm saying?
You'd rather stand out there.
Can we switch them?
So I think what Jake was saying is that his organization was fine splitting them up, so if, that's maybe not ideal, but it's definitely the last thing he does without each other.
We only do one month.
No, no, what we're saying is, what we did last year, we split, we ended up doing.
Two in one month?
That's what Jake was saying.
I, I'm just remembering.
No, I don't believe that.
Or your thing's splitting the time, like be like the time for the.
The time of day.
Yeah, that's what.
I think so.
Is there a limit on the time?
I don't think so, most, most people go for one to two hours.
Yeah, I mean, a two, couple hour, it doesn't.
Two hours is a long time to stand in the road.
That's what I'm saying, we, that would give us more.
They alternate, first people, they.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, if we could schedule. We could schedule a morning or an afternoon, a three-hour block to do whatever we want, and that would double the number of days we have. Because clearly, there's interest for other groups, I mean, I don't, we set a budget a week before we have to print it. We're putting May of '26. Coin drop scheduled out in, in July, you know what I'm saying? We're, we're pre-planning a year for our coin drops, we pre-planned for 15 minutes for our budget, so.
So if we basically do this, when we add an A M and a P M.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
That it's supposed to be the same day, is what you're saying? So it's one day a month, but it's morning and afternoon? So there are actually 12 organizations?
You're flirting with disaster game.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the general, the general, having done this for the townhouse, usually the, the idea, or those, those of us who have done it, it's, you know, you stand out there from nine to 11, that's the best time. That's when you catch everybody doing their errands on Saturday morning.
Doing their trash.
And then it's done. And then everybody gets to not have to stand in the road anymore. And if you really want to avoid the coin drop, you just don't go that way on Saturday morning. Otherwise, you just, yeah. But people don't generally want to have all day where they're, where they're going to inevitably run into. Because it slows down traffic.
Yeah.
Slows down traffic.
I don't make this a whole thing, but, but, um, every year we do this, and we don't know who did it last year or the year before, right?
Oh, we can know.
So what I'm saying, and what I'm wondering is, if we have more organizations, six seems like an awfully low number, the organizations that we have.
Sometimes we don't have enough to fill the slots.
Yeah.
We need some years, we don't.
I, let's be random.
Yeah, just do it randomly, move on.
Just do it out of the hat.
We need a new policy, I'm going to write a policy.
Is the policy just going to be like out of the hat?
About coin drops.
Do you have a number?
No, five hundred, what was your name?
Oh, name. Don't open it, don't open it, just one, just one.
Why name?
We're all, we're, oh, we're picking six of them?
Yeah.
Oh, we could have just picked one.
Yeah, but then.
You want to do it that way?
Not anymore.
We take that?
Tip of two. Mike has to do one too.
No?
Yeah.
Please elect it.
Yeah.
There we go.
She can't get fired either. Boom. No, he gets the winner. You don't have to even tell us. Last one is the one, don't make it one.
Yeah.
What is it?
Which one? Aware.
I want the one, I want that, wait. That's my, that we can fill out. For the record, I wasn't for that.
So how do we fill this in? How do we fill in the slots?
I make the motion that we have the town manager fill in the, the months.
Oh, great.
Just pick them, okay, start with Sharon, freedom.
I mean, like, my first choice, second choice.
I lost mine.
When I've been involved with organizations that have done this, we didn't get a first choice and a second choice, first of all. You got a month.
Right, just read them off.
And showed up that month, and you forgot about it.
Okay, go.
Kuanis.
Kuanis is in, in May, what's your share?
The library.
Library's June.
Hold on, hold on.
Tammy's got July, what do you got? Trails?
Trails. Greens got July?
July.
Trails.
Trails.
August is Eric.
Uh, Greensboro Nursing Home.
Okay, cancer.
And I have the one that is not aware, because I can't buy one already.
Who's got September?
September is Lemoil Camp Area Cancer Network, and Danny has Hardwick Fires Department.
Lemoil Area. Oil Area Cancer, they asked for June and August.
Doesn't matter.
I have.
They're first.
They get September.
And then, uh, the auxiliary is October.
So can we, if we are committed to doing this, is there a way that we can say that if aware asks next year that they're in their first year?
They're first?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just put them automatically in there for.
All right, so you have a schedule?
I got it. Thank you.
Good job.
That's messy.
I don't like that at all.
All right, let's give them the mark.
All right.
Mayor won and ran back.
Ten, thank you.
They're heavier.
Oh, boy.
I make the motion that we approve of tier three.
Whoa, can I, can I all go for a sec?
Yeah.
Could, could I first have a, a motion to approve the coin drop for, um, scheduled for 26? Which is May, it's, is Kuanis, June is the library, July is the trails, August is the nursing home, September is Lemoil Area Cancer Network, and October is Hardwick Fire. So you must be set, okay. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just one more follow-up then?
Yes.
When we reach out to the organization, just assume we're going to do, can we reach out to aware and encourage them to reach out to organizations that are selected to talk about.
Colm England?
Colm England or adding up to the slot?
One on each, huh?
Yeah.
That's the other thing.
Well, I mean, you also, I mean, I'm part of two organizations that forgot to put their name in the hat. So it's, it's like this every year.
Yes, well, most years.
Yeah, either you forget, either you don't have enough or you have too many.
Uh, all right, so now Danny.
Yes, tier three manufacturers, renewal for Green Mountain Scientific Corporation.
So you may approve it?
Approve manufacturer three renewal for.
Yeah.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item eleven, select board to consider approving manufacturers tier one small cultivator, small cultivator renewal for vitality cannabis LLC.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
So this is, and these are both the thing, um, it's the, they don't have any, like, um,
Fractions.
infractions or, or we don't know because we don't, we're not privy to that.
We would know if there was an.
Yeah.
We would know.
Yeah, and this is the time that they would be brought up?
Okay, okay. So there are none?
That there are none.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, item twelve, select board to consider selecting a contractor for the EWP bank stabilization project in East Hardwick, and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with them. This one, um, trying to remember, there was a recommendation.
What's that?
We, who is?
This is the last EWP project for twenty twenty three.
I know, but was there just one?
No, I think.
There were.
There was last one.
There were four for this.
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Hang on.
I make the motion that we, um.
Oh, this is the one, sorry.
Yeah, okay, that we, uh, approve the bid, or accept the bid and authorize the town manager to sign the contract for, uh, JML Construction LLC. JML is a different corporation to see now, but.
In the amount of.
But, in the amount of seventy six thousand nine hundred ninety point zero zero. The bid documents and everything, the paperwork in the packet are correct.
Correct.
This, this avenue is incorrect, that's all.
Okay.
And, um, this is the one we have the, there was a letter from the engineering firm recommending that we accept this bid.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
But they had worked several EWP projects.
Yeah.
With that engineer.
With that.
Yeah, with that.
And they've done good work.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, it's actually a company out of Middlesex, a middle company, this is the second generation.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, any further discussion?
Well, could you just remind us of the, how this works again?
The EWP?
Hmm.
So, well, our next, um, our, our next item is engineering for EWP. So what happened last time, we, it's through the NRCS, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and this is, uh, emergency watershed protection work. So it's bank armoring, um, bank restoration, and it's to protect man-made structures that are within a certain distance from rivers and streams. Um, so this is the last one. Uh, it's located up in East Hardwick, and it was done, this one was done by a third-party engineer because EWP wanted it done. They didn't have time to do this one, they did the other three. And with the twenty twenty four EWP's, the NRCS does, no longer has their engineers. They lost nine engineers to, um, Doge cuts, and so we have to do third-party engineering.
Oh.
So, this is where we're at. This is the last construction project we have for twenty twenty three. Will be completed.
Right, this is actual construction.
Correct.
The next step will be engineering for the twenty twenty four.
Correct, that's the next item.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next is, uh, select board item thirteen, select board to consider selecting an engineering firm to complete designs on EWP twenty twenty four properties and authorize town manager to sign a contract with them. So.
Those were, those are pretty large proposals. They weren't put in the packet.
Okay, is it?
That's Horizon and DuPoising King.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. And, um.
The prices.
Do we have a recommendation? Those we can.
Horizon, they're doing some sub-.
They're, they're doing five bridges.
I'm.
And we have only doing a slope stabilization and.
But would you rather have another bridge or, I mean, some, two ways don't matter.
They're both.
It's good, it's good, they're both more.
Yeah, they look like they're doing.
I mean, if somebody said for the potential for less cost, we have knowledge, you know what I'm saying, Horizon's already got a lot going on in Hardwick, so they're not necessarily necessarily research stuff that's, it's fresh money.
I think they're both capable companies.
Yeah.
They're both within the, um, the amount.
So, uh, when I read the proposals, I, I didn't have a strong preference. I, I need a nudge one way or another.
I think to Danny's point, having, you know, having, you're already working with it, it's working well, there's already communication and.
Right, communication lies there, you get the relationships.
The Doug Weber stopped in the office, uh, the other day, gave me a verbal update as to what was going on.
It wasn't listed on that application this time.
It was Will Davis.
Yeah.
He's, he's, he's based in Haverford.
I mean.
He's retired.
Oh, okay.
But he, I think he's got, because he sold, they sold, and then this, the company sold again, so he's got until, I believe he told me the first of December, and then he's.
So that's why he's not.
Yeah.
One of the people listed for this project is this.
I motion to hire Horizon's engineering to complete designs on EWP twenty twenty four properties and authorize the town manager to sign a contract with them.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have the added item fourteen, select board to talk about C D, C E E G R.
DR.
DR.
I'm gonna read your thing again.
So this was the pot of money that came from, uh, community facilities through the DR, uh, the disaster from twenty twenty three. It's about sixty eight million dollars came into the state. Um, recently, uh, it was Johnson, and it was Central Vermont County, uh, Washington County and Town Johnson were slated to receive like thirty eight million. Um, there's thirteen million that is available statewide, and they're taking applications, pre-applications for mitigation projects and implementation projects. Planning and implementation for mitigation projects. So, the center piece of the downtown, that, remember the three-prong approach upstream, the middle part, and then below the Cottage Tree Bridge. So, this ready program would help apply for those funds for continued planning for the middle part, and implementation for the HEB floodplain restoration property. So this would be pre-application and application for those funds, the C E B G D R funds for those projects.
So this is a competitive process for the remaining thirteen million that is available.
Correct.
The rest of us.
And the state of Vermont, A, ACCD, I think it's ACCD, wrote, uh, Hardwick, Town Hardwick into an amendment to HUD for the, this plan to have us be considered in that thirty eight million.
Ah.
Let's do it.
And that, and this is how we.
That's separate, that's separate. We, we could have access to additional funds.
Okay, but in the meantime, we definitely wanna apply.
Yes, and this is a one-time program because of that disaster.
Right.
There will not be another one of these, one, another pot of this money, this DR funding, or the twenty twenty four disaster.
Sorry, oh, so only for the twenty three?
Correct.
And, um, it's not totally pertinent, but the, you mentioned the three different sections of the river, the upstream, the downtown, the downstream. But what about the upstream part you didn't mention?
So that was, um, that was part of the river initiative.
Hmm.
And it, it, as far as I'm concerned, was a flop.
Okay.
Uh, Stan Tech did not show up with a proposal with VEM that was, it was a braided channel, and it was nothing that they wanted to do.
Hmm.
Um, so we have the EWP in twenty twenty four for the bank stabilization.
Hmm.
Um, but we don't have a major mitigation project for that section of the river. However, there is a possibility of one further up, um, but that's all kind of in limbo right now. So the only thing we have upstream is, uh, bank stabilization.
Okay.
But VEM and the state of Vermont is still very interested in a mitigation solution for upstream.
So what do you need from us regarding?
To, uh, submit application for the.
For ready. Do you wanna, do you wanna add anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hang, just let Danny complete the motion and get us that.
Uh, yeah, the motion is to do what we gotta do for the.
Submit the application.
The ready, whatever, I don't, I don't remember the name.
So, or, uh, seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, Tracy, what can you tell us?
Um, just that, uh, we, we had a meeting with Pat Moulton, who's working with the state, uh, with communities, uh, she, she was given Hardwick in addition to the other communities she's working on. She suggested we approach this, the ready program, which we've used before, um, to get support to hire Heather Carrington again to write the CDBGDR, um, applications, just because they're very involved and complicated, and Heather's already working with other communities on this exact same application for similar, so we're all, so she's very experienced in it. So, um, think about it like nesting grants, so we get the ready grant that, that pays Heather to write the other proposal to get us the grant we really want. Um, I would work with Heather obviously on that. I would also write the pre, um,
Pre-applications.
But, and there's no guarantee that ready will support, um, Heather doing both, doing two for us. You know, a lot of communities are just presenting one project, we're asking for two. They may say, well, we'll support her to do one, pick one, and we may try and write the other ourselves, you know, but this, but this, we need to have this motion, we need to be able to tell the ready program that this, this select board supports our applying to them. It's a requirement of applying to them, so that's why this is.
Great.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, any more discussion? All in favor, um, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tracy, for agreeing that and for doing the work to push it forward. Thank you, Lee, for explaining so much too, because this is not, it's all complicated. All the possible funds. Lots of acronyms. Uh, any select board reports?
So the lift at the townhouse that we ordered.
Yes.
So long ago, arrived this week, and is being installed.
Yay.
Um, so the project is almost there. Um, tonight is the first, the opening concert of the chamber players. So they'll be there every Thursday until mid-August. Um, yeah, that's what I got.
Great. That's exciting, so. Yeah.
Yeah, coming along, yeah.
Yeah. And that will allow the balcony to be open again?
The balcony, the, yeah, the, the addition, so it's egress and accessibility, so the addition, it houses the, uh, fire escape stairs from the balcony and the lift that brings people to the stage.
Yeah.
So we can have town meeting there in March, and we can have voting on the stage behind the curtain, we can have the meeting in front of the curtain, and it's all accessible.
Nice.
Great. Um, any other select board reports? New business, old business?
This is a, this is a super quick comment, um, but I've heard from a lot of people, uh, just their thinking about the last couple of years this week, uh, for Hardwick, and, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and that, uh, there's still a lot of trauma around the flooding, and, um, I personally wasn't affected by it on my property, but when there's a big rain, you like get worried about it.
Yep, today, I don't, today I was over, um, coming up over Fairly Mountain, and it was black and raining hard.
And it's still on again?
I had a wicked bad feeling, I'm like, boy, it didn't even affect me, it didn't, it didn't affect a lot of people. I just saw Lindville, something, just got it, again. Can I?
A big rain?
Yeah, a big rain.
Oh, really?
There was rescue boats that were heading.
Yeah, people. So, count the bridges, you know, there again, some of this flooding we're seeing, majority of this flooding we're seeing is not being caused by flooding next to Mississippi. It's being caused by flooding next to a small mountain brook that is overwhelms everything.
Wow.
People think about getting flooded when you're at, at twenty four hundred feet, you know? I know, they have a little valley on the mountain, but it's happening.
But, and my point is bringing it up, and I think we live in a racing community, and we've been really lucky in a long race, and I just wanted to share, and. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and thanks for all the ongoing work.
Uh, from the.
Town offices for flood recovery and resilience. Uh, anything else? Then let's adjourn. Thank you all.